I can zoom from my desk, you know it, yeah.
Anything's fine.
I can send my ones to add a quick trip though, so that don't work well.
All right, I got six clock. Call a meeting to order a roll call.
Ms. Tausken?
Here.
James Coyle?
Here.
Matt Hatcher?
Here.
Sam Wilson?
Here.
Jerry Baraka? Abby Athens?
Terry Moya?
Here.
And Tyler Nelson is also absent.
Pleasure to lead in. A pleasure to attend to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Proof of posting, a copy of the notice was delivered on four seven, it was faxed to Star News and Lake Ridge Bank Black Earth Branch, posted at the Black Earth Municipal Building, the Black Earth Post Office, and also on the Black Earth website. Public input, any public input? Okay, hearing and seeing none, move on to number five, discussion action on approval of minutes from March seventh and March twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six, discussion action on approval, library board appointment of Dylan Helmanstein.
I would move approval.
I'll second.
Of Dylan Helmanstein.
Any discussion?
Okay, no, we're on this, why do we have anything to do with this?
The, everybody but the school board member is appointed by the village president.
I see.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, Dylan.
I'll leave an evic, say I play practice.
You can do whatever you want.
Okay, thanks, Mr. President.
Discussion action on letter of support, speed board sign grant.
This letter I drafted was for, just a letter of support, department was applying for, or wanted to apply for a grant, we talked about this at the last police committee meeting, and this would help get a little speed sign thing that you've seen mounted on signs where it will flash your speeds to make it go down. So one of the requirements of the grant was just a letter of support from the village, so it's what I drafted. Grant's approval before it comes down to you, please.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion, um, action on chicken license for Tom Marks, thirteen fourteen mils.
His neighbors, or he has a letter from his neighbor saying that they don't care, right? The only one neighbor that responded, so I make a motion to approve.
I second. More discussion?
He had a cute little coupon going on too.
Did they have time, did, nobody respond at?
Um, Sue Patterson responded.
What I mean, did they have?
Well, you have to do it within a certain period.
Yeah, you have to have someone's time, did everybody got that?
Pass that, yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion action on naming Park, Black Earth Creek Park, as approved by Parks Committee.
So Parks Committee had a long list of names, of all the names that were submitted by the community, and it was pretty much unanimous of Black Earth Creek Park. Creekside Park was the second, but the committee approved Black Earth Creek Park as the official name for the group of property, so.
I would move approval of the name as submitted by the Parks Committee. I'll second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, discussion action sweets, uh, street sweeper. Potential purchase of a two thousand twelve Elgin Pelican NS.
So in the packet, we have included a street sweeper that I found, and Danny had sent out yesterday the quote for that street sweeper. Um, this one is located in west of Mankato, Minnesota. So we got here a two thousand twelve sweeper, pretty low hours, low miles, kind of a list of things that it has with it. If they, if we decide we want this machine, they'll go get it, bring it down to the Wisconsin location, which is Menominee Falls, where we just had our back truck repaired, we can take a look at it, and if we opt out of it, then we're no money into it at that time, just walk away from it, they'll find somebody else to purchase it. So with the price of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, you get, the freight chart is in there, inspection, reconditioning, training is included as well, they will bring somebody from John Deere in to inspect the motors, that's what the motor is on that unit. They won't receive that unit till April or May, so they can only hold it for us until April fourteenth, which is Friday. Final sale, depending on our inspection, as I said, we can cancel at any time, basically as long as we say, give the go ahead, yes, we want to do this. There is financing available. Purchase includes no charge annual inspections at our location, there is six months parts and labor warranty for any components that were replaced during the reconditioning process. Basically, they just go this thing stem to stern, and pick what needs to be done on it, and they do it, so when you get it, it's operational, ready to go. The money, where I was thinking of pulling it from, was out of the Go Note, Go Note. So we have a good amount of money there, so that was where I was going to propose we get that from. I did actually find today another sweeper located in Nebraska, which is only a hundred thousand, it's a year older, has more hours and stuff, very good unit as well. That one, though, only comes with sixty day warranty on the parts, so if anything fails after that, so we get the parts, and we either fix it ourselves, or we hire somebody to put the parts in type thing. But that one either would be involving flying down, driving down to look at it, or we just take a chance of them saying, yep, it's a great machine, ship it to us, and that's kind of, kind of how it is. But with these, both of these dealers, and another one I talked to last night, you know, a guy in Pennsylvania said they got a guy from Minnesota coming, this guy in Nebraska said he's got equipment shipping out to Connecticut, so I mean, these things are kind of traveling all across the country, it's not like there's, oh, we're going to go buy this thing in Madison and bring it home type thing, you know, these things are boot scootin' all over the place. I would propose, or I would like to see the two thousand twelve one, which is a little bit more expensive, but I think that's a little bit better unit, the one that is in this handout that I just gave, like I said, is another thirty-seven thousand dollars cheaper, but it doesn't come with the warranties, and I just don't feel like it's a, I don't feel like there's as good of a guarantee with it, you can't look at it before we get it type thing. That kind of makes me a little squeamish.
A lot of miles, too.
Yep, it has more miles, more hours on it.
What's the average miles, get on some flights of street sweeper?
Um, so more, more miles and hours is, or sorry, more hours is kind of the big deal than the mileage, so like that motor's probably good for about ten, thirteen thousand hours. The one I'm looking at only has three thousand eight hundred hours on it. Just depends, you know, what your community size is, you know, with your service.
Well, what did we pick crossplanes?
Eight thousand.
But how, how far did they go, didn't they send in their voice saying like, it was uh, five miles or something at a time?
Typically, when they come, it's, say, an average of six hundred, or sorry, six hours at eight hundred dollars a time, they come to do it, yeah, six hours.
We did it four times a month?
Oh, gosh, no, whatever.
No, I mean, didn't, isn't that what we'd want, though?
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
We want a lot more.
Right, I mean.
We can do it a lot more, so that's, you know.
So what I was, twenty.
Have to fill up a crossplane scheduling and.
Correct, so when I was.
And your machine does the greatest job.
When I was at.
Just means you can do everything.
When I was at the hospital, I got a phone call from Jay, what's his name, Danny, the president from Crossplanes?
Uh, Megan Field.
Thank you. So Jay had called me on Thursday and said, hey, you know, I've heard you and Jerry Gray, which is the director of Public Works for Crossplanes, have had a conversation about sharing a newer street sweeper. And like, yeah, obviously, we got some reorganization going on here with our members and stuff like that, and, kind of from what I understood from Jerry was basically, well, I said, well, who's going to maintain it, who's going to store it, who's doing all the stuff on it? And he's like, well, Crossplanes would probably buy it, store it, we run it, we do the maintenance.
We'd be in.
Like, well, we're at the same, well, we're at that type thing.
Yeah.
Where we're at their mercy.
Yeah.
So we've been doing this agreement since two thousand fifteen, I think is when the other one fell apart, broke down. It's gotten us by, but I think it's time to figure out how we can get something here, you know, we've been working, or I have been working hard to find something that I think will fit us good. Question was, how much is a new one?
Yeah.
Two hundred fifty, three hundred plus thousand, depending upon the options you need. But what could we, you know, if we're spending that extra money, which is a new sweeper, I'm all for it, give it to me, but could that money right now be utilized for something else?
Well, we have, street rehab, you know, we have that money available for us, that million dollars, but yet, I want to make sure we spread it out and not just focus on one thing. So right now, realistically, that thing has depreciated ten thousand dollars a year since it was new. You can fix a lot for ten thousand dollars a year. Now, the other question, though, so that's part of the way I think, the other way I think is, are we missing the boat by not buying a new one? And the reason I think that is, so let's say we put a hundred and fifty thousand down on it, and then finance the rest, what would it cost us? And if, if, if that's possible, I mean, can we do that for eight thousand a year for the remaining balance? It's already budgeted, right? Or, I, I go back for it.
But, yeah, or.
And how long does it take to get a new one?
See, I'm on your side, depending, that's what we're, to hold into is lead time, on lead time as well.
Lead time.
For Vanguard, we still haven't got the new truck.
Exactly. You know, that eight thousand dollars that you had allocated for crossplanes to come in, we just rock that over right into the repair stuff, so that it's going into this if it needs it.
No, I, I know that would work, but what I'm saying is, if we bought a brand new one, and put the hundred and fifty thousand dollars down, would the eight thousand dollars a year pay the payments?
I guess we'd have to.
But I mean, the money we have borrowed already is the lowest we're going to get in a long time now, so it's like, may as well.
Is it worth financing again when you are?
No, you wouldn't want to buy it.
You might not, the interest might be two hundred.
Yeah, I think you'd want to just go right out and buy it. Yeah.
Right.
But, what's the lead time?
It was two years, I mean, they're, I think they said they had a group of forty coming in right now, I don't know if they're spoken for quite yet or not, but, you know, that's.
I don't, we can't.
So if we get this one and have to stick another fifty thousand into it?
No, you're getting it for a hundred and thirty-seven, and it's definitely.
Yeah, what I'm saying is.
Not like this one, we're about it off an auction, but in years coming, it might.
Yeah, if we had to, we could, yeah, so I mean.
So it's probably, probably a good choice to do it that way.
Right.
But I do go back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we happily take a new one, but for, for the past eight years, it's been a struggle of even trying to get something, you know?
Yeah.
You've had ones for thirty thousand.
I would go new.
This is pretty good, I mean, that's pretty good for an old one.
Two years lead time.
You've had ones for thirty thousand dollars that it was decided, no, that's too much money. But yet, it's something you have available at your grasp, you know, when storm comes in, leaves down, breaks it down, you know, it's available, we got two hours, okay, let's go get a couple streets and clean up type thing. So, I, we just need to get something, in my opinion, but.
For now.
We need to.
We can't wait two years.
And you're saying this is good through the fourteenth?
Yes, so, I guess basically, he just needs to know by Friday, you want to say yes, then it's going to be coming down here to Wisconsin, we'll go look at it, and then we will.
And then they'll look through it.
Are we going to bring it back, or will they bring it here then?
So, if we say yes to the one thirty-seven, and they bring it to the Wisconsin location, are we good, or are we going to get into one of those situations where somebody else is going to say, I'm going to look at it too, and I'm going to give you another fifteen thousand dollars?
Well, they committed, it's ours unless we do.
We're holding it till the fourteenth.
Okay.
That if we give the go ahead and say yes, get this machine coming here, it is ours first choice, first choice.
I think we should.
I think we should.
If we back out on it.
It's going to be infected by John Deere.
We don't, we don't have the money coming down, you know, we don't have the money transporting it down here type thing.
Right.
That's another big thing, we don't have to worry about transport, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, I'll make a motion, that we proceed with the purchase of the street sweeper for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, pending the inspections, and approve the money for that, out of the GoFund, based upon completion of inspection.
That's a second.
Whatever, you got plenty of them.
Good.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yay!
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
And for what it's worth, Dylan, right?
Bye, Dylan.
For what it's worth, my resident expert looked at this because you guys, it's foolish, nothing about.
And your resident expert knows this shit.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, he's driven one for a number of years, so, years like that, that looks like a good machine.
It is.
Yeah.
Number eleven, discussion action, twenty twenty-one Go Note borrowing, spending options, brainstorming future projects.
This is just, I just had this on there from a continuation from last time, just kind of keep it top of mind. So we'll have all these three sweeper.
Can we, so let's, going forward, can we have a spreadsheet of the Go Note, and what's, what we've allocated at each meeting, so we know what we have, and then prioritize based upon that?
That would be great, that would be really helpful.
Especially, yeah.
Eric coming in, yeah.
So I, I, I think we still have to prioritize things, right? So, I know that we have to probably put a hundred thousand away to the matching for the grant.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
And that's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, what else have we?
Two hundred thousand for Town and Country to do the road designing, spanning.
Yep, yep.
Two hundred, we did that?
Yep.
Yep.
The water system service.
Water system service.
That was twelve thousand something, right?
Twelve thousand?
Yeah. Then we still got to look at, I mean, we still got to figure out rough, things like that.
Yep, so I do have, this, we did approve, we'll work to be done at well, too.
Oh, the well?
Will be done at well, too.
Yeah, and that just should get done regardless, whether it's running or not.
Yep.
Generator, so I, I think we need to bring all these costs in and have a meeting based upon needs and costs.
Agreed.
You want to try to accumulate all the info and meet with Matt?
Yes.
And we can go from there?
Okay.
Think Charlie will work on this one, Matt?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Any other discussion on this before we move on? Discussion action on financial reports, Danny.
So, I printed the report with the month of April, but it should have been the end of March, it's five. At the top, it says the month's ending, April thirtieth, obviously, the month hasn't ended, so, sorry for that. First quarter is done. We have some, we have some, oh, annual reports that are being completed, like the recycling grants and all that kind of stuff, all the wrapping up, all the fun, fun things with that, and then obviously, revenues being down, those will bump up in August when we get our settlement from the county for the restaurant taxes.
Oh, I see that we're going, I'm sorry, go ahead. I see that under Department three, it just says, general legal fees, we at one point want to get it, tell what was going on.
We were. It talked about, yeah.
Discuss.
Itemized.
That will be in the, in the invoices portion, this is just the report.
Yeah, but is that itemized for what it was, what the bills are for?
Well, we get them, we get them, so I can, so I can.
And, once we progress on the program, when we have access to going to actually look at the actual invoices and stuff, too, will really help that.
Right.
I make a motion, we approve financials. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries thirteen, discussion action, invoices to be paid.
So the second packet that you have, the little trims in the corner, is all the invoices to pay.
What do you mean, it's the same thing?
Yes.
And then they added?
All, yes.
Can I ask, how's the new cleaner working out?
Good.
Kramer?
Yeah, she's great.
She's good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have we got her certificate of insurance?
Yes, yes.
I make a motion to approve the invoices to be paid.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion action on committee assignment, normally what we do is we hand out blank sheets, and then people sign up, one, two, three, four.
Yes, so I also put together a survey on these, that I can send out to everyone if you'd like, so you just click on which one.
Okay.
That you'd be able to.
Oh, that would work.
Yeah.
That'll make a lot easier for me also. And it's just a introductory thing, nothing you decided tonight, just about what you want, so I can send out if you guys.
Well, you, because we normally get, something where we can write it?
Yeah.
Right, so then, then we'll pick, at the next committee meeting, we'll pick, Terry will have that information already to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because then I can go to Terry, and then Terry can decide, and then present it, what our choices are. All right. Moving on to fifteen, reports, Vanguard, we met on March twenty-first at six thirty, talked about candidates for replacing Lydia's position, Sean was going to do narrowing it down into interviews, and I believe they've made some progress since then, he just gave a report on the truck and payment of the first part, and what they were doing with tree trimming and things like that. Next meeting is when, Sean?
Be, uh, May sixteenth at six thirty.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Sure, first and foremost, like Mitch said, we have made progress on Lydia's position, we have an offer, accepted offer, the plan is candidate starting April seventeenth, so next week, Monday already, so we are super excited for her, we think it's going to, we think she's going to be a good fit, so that's. What's up? I'm going to, I'm going to keep that quiet for now, I'd love, if you want to call me, I just, with them giving their notice and everything, I just would like to keep that quiet for now, but if you guys want to call me, feel free.
They're starting on Monday already?
Yep, yep.
So she's going to give, they're going to give a three day notice?
Yeah, so that doesn't make you think twice.
A week. It was on Friday, she accepted it on Friday, she's accepted it on Friday, so she's given a one week notice, that's what's required by her company at the, at the moment.
Oh, well, that's, okay, okay.
Yep, yep. Um, we had those big storms here a couple weeks ago, we made it through them very, very well, we had actually zero outages during those storms, so that, that was pretty impressive, so our tree trimming over the winter definitely worked, worked well, we completed our CPR first aid training last week, and we did work with a couple of your guys' employees with that, so that was good. Frost is out, and we are starting to dig, so we got a lot of new services coming in from, it's kind of been over the winter, saved up for frost coming out, and several of them are pretty long extensions, so, that, that is going to keep us busy for a while here, to get an update on our transformer for the substation, that was scheduled for June, now that kind of got bumped back to July, but I don't think that's going to be much of an issue, so that's, it's still mostly on track, and that's, for the most part, it for now.
Yeah, man, did they give you a reason when they pushed back the transformer?
Uh, just, I think time schedule, I think the, the ones they're working on now, they kind of, I'm sure material issues as usual.
Thank you, thanks. Fire district.
Uh, we had met on March second, and I reported at that meeting, at our last March meeting, and our next meeting's not till May fourth.
What does that mean, Iowa?
We met on March sixteenth, and there's no discharge violations, and the only thing we report is there is the true upcoming next month. We should expect money off the bill, or you'll see that come in, that'll go for two months, and then you'll get a check. Um, next meeting is April twentieth.
We have not had an EDC, so EMS, uh, ignore. I don't know anything either, so. Library Board.
Uh, they met on March twenty-eighth, the wheels had fallen off my bus there for a few weeks in March, so I was not able to attend, I did look at the minutes, and I'm going to have Bailey kind of hop in, I know that they appointed Linda Colby as secretary at that meeting, and that there was an art gallery auction fundraiser scheduled for March twenty-ninth, with Jean Summers donated to all the friends, and a lot of that meeting, I think they discussed the architectural firm interviews, and I'm going to kind of hands off, and Bailey can give you an update during her report, if that's okay, Bailey?
Before Bailey?
Okay, great.
Thank you, Bailey.
Yeah, no problem, so we did spend most of the time discussing the architectural interviews, and we, after some, a lot of discussion, we ended up going with FEH Design, based on their public engagement strategy, and I'm currently in negotiations with them about price and the level of service that we'll need from them, so, more.
Question, Bailey?
Yeah.
Bailey?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. FPS, did you say?
F E H.
F E H, that's the one out of Dubuque?
Yes.
Yeah, I enjoyed them a lot, yeah, it's good, I'm glad you made that selection.
Yeah, we really heavily based our decision on their strategy for engaging with the public and getting public input on their designs, and that was something that was really important to us from the beginning, so that was a major factor, and we're really excited to, to work with them.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Um, we also discussed, there's a lot of backstory for this, but South Central Library Systems Headquarters is going to be moving buildings, and their current building is where they have all of our server software, so everything that runs our wifi and our wired internet, and they are going to be moving that over Memorial Day weekend, to try to lessen the amount of time that libraries will not have any access to internet at all. But, the library board did approve the closure on May thirtieth, which is one extra day from Memorial Day weekend, because on that date, we still won't have internet, and because of the way that we do things, it would be really hard for us to operate without having access to any internet at all. So rather than try to struggle through it and force everybody else to struggle through it as well, we decided it might be better for us to just close. We also authorized South Central Library System to bill adjacent counties on our behalf for the twenty twenty-four reimbursements that we get every year for services rendered to folks that don't live in Dane County. The Friends are having a fundraiser with the Madison Mallards, there's a game on, The Friends are having a fundraiser with the Madison Mallards, there's a game on, um, July thirty first. You can buy tickets now, they're in their own special section, there's three different tiers and all of the proceeds from that will go to the Friends. We're really excited about that fundraiser. We have a program on anxiety with Tim Decora planned for May eighteenth. Um, and we were awarded an American Heart Association grant for us to be able to start, um, circulating blood pressure monitors along with some resources for local healthcare. So that if somebody does get a concerning reading, they're able to reach out to, um, a healthcare facility near them. We are really excited about that, but still working out some of the logistics of it. And then I just heard today that, um, there was a vote to make our local holds pilot project permanent, so that's great news for me. I've put a lot of work into making sure that people know how beneficial this has been for our community and keeping the things that we buy in the community for at least a couple of months. So, um, I'm very excited about that, that's really exciting news for me. And our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday on April eighteenth.
Awesome, Bailey, thank you. All right, aye, Public Works.
Public Works met March twenty ninth at four thirty. And, you don't have the minutes with.
I got it, yep.
Did I, did you send them to me?
Yeah, they're on the, they're printed out for me. I think they're in the.
Listen. Print's mess for me, what the heck?
There we go.
I think it's on the other side.
No, that's village board.
I put on that.
Yep, um, so, yep, we met on the twenty third of January. Uh, Vanguard went through all of their stuff, which Sean just updated and Mitch just updated us there. There was talk of the Cooper property, Main Street property, Parks obviously decided what the name was on that. Still working on drawing some lines for this continuation of Main Street. We decided to keep that parcel for now. And we're gonna probably just hang on to that if we do that vacation type thing, but that's still work at the Public Works level. Updates, I guess, for Town and Country and part of my thing, too. Town and Country has started working on the water system planning and study, um, Nick's been calling me, asking some for information, um, getting that ready. I have seen the survey crew out with Town and Country looking at the roads, um, checking manholes as far as elevations and starting to build those plans for our road project stuff. It was a pretty lengthy discussion and Tyler gave that, since that's kinda his specialty for the co-op properties down by the depot, is what contamination is still there. And where we wanna go with putting a road through to make a full legal street through to South Street there. That one's kind of a work in progress, too, we're gonna wait to see if Public Works Committee changes and stuff like that before we move forward on that. Public Works decided to approve fifteen thousand dollars for crack filling for this year and I did talk with crack filler service. They're gonna do our work probably in the fall, just because they're trying to move their way north to get ahead of all the come, the, all the townships and cities that wanna do the chip sealing, so they gotta stay ahead of them. I was totally fine with that, um, with them coming back in the fall and doing artwork, I think that'll work out good and then we'll know if we have maybe a little more money that we can allocate to that chip seal, or to that crack filling. We got the Jetter back on Tuesday and already had to use it on Friday for main break and it performed just perfectly. Wasn't, wasn't thinking we were gonna use it that quick, but we did and it did the job that it needed to for that main break. Basically what we utilized it for was its purpose of remove the blacktop, there's a seventy-five pair of foam line in there, so we sucked down to that, basically it's a giant shop, or shop back, you know, got sucked to from the big tank on there.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Nice.
So sucked down, found our foam line, instead of having a hand dig for it, uh, went three, four feet down with the back hole and then located the water main, you know, so it saved probably an hour worth of shoveling by the time you think around with all that's going through or locates or around, or around utilities and such. So very, very happy with the machine, um, like James said, it's big, people are gonna ask why is Blackerney something like that, but it's just a more purposeful, multi-function machine for the community instead of just doing one job. Which is, I think of, if we're spending taxpayer's money, it better be something that's a multi-function.
How long did it save you going around the line, about hour?
Probably an hour versus, you know, hand digging all that, so, yeah, it's, it'll, it'll be beneficial, I think, so. Streetsweeper, um, we obviously talked about that already and roofing projects, I did have a couple of companies come in and give bids. One of them was Howler and Sons, they walked up on this roof of the village office and they're like, you got the leaks fixed, this roof should last ten, fifteen years. There's no, no issues with the asphalt. I do remember in looking back, uh, this bush roof was replaced in, I mean, twenty, two thousand six and two thousand eight when Vern Wett was the president. So we've got, you know, some time left on it, so there wasn't a rush unless we get some more leaks, they're fine with the way it looks. They were pretty comfortable with it and weren't like just, oh, yeah, we can replace it for you, you know, wanting to spend the money. The roof had well, too, uh, Public Works did decide to move forward on that, so I've made that contact to Howler and Sons, um, and they're gonna get us worked into their schedule, hopefully this spring, yeah. Other news, I think, was just, we decided to purchase a mower deck for Kubota tractor that we have for ball fields, that way we have a second mower for backup in case the first one fails. Get behind on mowing due to weather and stuff like that. And you guys went into closed session, or I was a part of it, I guess, for the wait discussion. I think the only thing I have difference, um, and I just got some information on this, the water softener for this building, I do have some quotes, but I didn't get it onto the agenda. It's fourteen hundred dollars, is that something you guys want to put on the agenda to make approval for?
Fourteen hundred for the water.
Man, for plumbing, it was fourteen hundred bucks for the water softener, Prairie Plumbing gave a rough estimate of fourteen to sixteen hundred dollars. I understand if it's gotta go to a meeting, um, because it's over my spending amount, but I just got it ninety.
You did for maintenance.
Yeah, there's ten thousand maintenance, I believe, for this building.
Comes out of there, we don't have to, yeah.
That's, I, my limit's five hundred, so I, you know.
Yeah, just they take it out of you.
Yeah.
It's gotta be done.
Perfect. I guess that's Public Works Committee report and my report.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, there you go.
Set a new.
Nice truck.
We just set a new date because we're waiting for Madam President's decision on.
Yes.
Committees.
Committees. Thank you on the truck for everybody making that happen.
All right, Parks Committee, we won't have anything, Chair's not here, anybody else on Parks?
Yeah, I guess, we talked about, um, some Olson Toon stuff and I'll hopefully get some information back from them, maybe by next meeting. We approved to have TruGreen actually do, uh, the Weeden Feed Program this year versus Olson Toon, um, and that was a cost thing, terrible cost. Thatching is to be done, uh, for Parks and Ball Field, the Old Talent did the thatching on the big ball diamond and we did the little ball diamond and some other stuff and that.
Did you discuss the ball diamond, or?
It was brought up, um, I guess, for the board to know that the high school decided to move their games to Mesa, Mady.
Really?
Due to the condition of the ball field.
Wasn't the only reason.
It wasn't the only reason, but it was one of the reasons, um, was.
Well, parking can be the, yeah, that's be the main reason.
So that'll be something off to that Parks level, keep on fixing.
And is somebody, is there, have you talked to that guy that owns?
I am not, I'm a little short.
I think we should make it an effort to reach out to him and say, you know, even if we try to rent that. Yeah, or rent the parking lots or rent the playground equipment for a dollar, whatever we do, you know, like we do with the.
How they feel.
You know, home, yeah, see if we can't come to some agreement with him.
How much equipment he's got there, I walked through it the other day, just to see each piece of equipment, there's a lot of, through the building? No, just through the playground.
Playground, yeah, it's a very nice playground.
He doesn't want anybody touching the playground stuff and he doesn't want anybody grabbing his parking lot.
So I think we should, I think we should just reach out to him and say, can we talk? You know? Find him coffee or something, so, if you, I'll, I'll do that if you wanna give me his name and contact, do we still have that? I love that.
I see, I serve my.
Use my charm.
Use your charm, can I?
Man, there goes that.
My charm right there. Put it near little one.
Um, yeah.
Okay, anymore on Parks?
Um, I don't think so unless you guys said something you wanted to kick in.
All right, and there was no police committee meeting?
Morning.
All right, number sixteen, considering a motion to enter into closed session, pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data. Any public employees in which the governmental body has jurisdiction.
I love it.
Or exercise responsibility. Public employees, uh, Public Works Department, roll call vote.
All right. Mitch Austin?
Yes.
James Foyle?
Yes.
Scott Hatchet?
Yes.
Tammy Lashando?
Yes.
Jared Gramerson? Terry Ware?
Yes.
And Harry Musten's on that.
Jen couldn't make it because of her work.
Okay.
Her police. We need to have a police.
Yeah, we do.
Soon.
We haven't had one for a while, so we definitely need to get on that.
Can we just, so keep it?
Could it just be, yeah, I think we could just keep it.
The cow?
Yeah.
Isn't it supposed to be a roll call to come out?
Yeah.
Is it? It's not even recorded.
Well, that's true.
No. All right, so we did that. Motion action on items discussed during closed session.
I make a motion to approve. Do I have to put the percentage in there? To, just to approve the.
Among the.
The amount of phrase that we were, that we talked about in session.
Discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, any other business can be brought before the board for future agendas. Just Madam President, in the future.
The committee assignments.
Yep.
Committee assignments and then, um, we need to get together to talk about Vera Becker and her contract, since we left it out there in the big motion.
Did I miss something?
When's the, the, oh, sorry.
When we approve Vera Bacher to do the.
Organizational and board meeting will be May ninth, one will be just before the other, so you don't have to come back twice.
So what you're saying is we'll do the organization and all that stuff and then.
Same night.
And then pull.
I thought you could do that.
Bacher in.
What?
You have to have the organization meeting.
Before the board meeting, but you could do it roughly before, we've done it.
Yeah.
You have.
We've done it the last two years.
Yep, we've done it right before them, yeah.
And I checked, because I was the first one to do that, cause I didn't wanna do two sessions.
Yeah.
And we checked with Minut, uh, Lee, and it's absolutely fine as long as it's done before you go, go into the board meeting.
So, and you're talking May ninth, the sixth, right?
Why does it say review May ninth? For board review.
Our, our organizational meeting and Village Board meeting will be May second, right? Okay, good, that's what I had. And then the board review is May ninth.
So is it gonna be, are we gonna start at six o'clock or are we gonna start at?
It depends on the committee assignments, right?
Right.
Uh, six is right, right?
Yeah.
Do you wanna start the organizational at six?
Might, well, one is done before the board meeting, you're good to go.
I don't know if you wanna.
Well, it's up to her.
Yeah.
Next Tuesday, she's the.
Sixteenth.
And then the open book is April twentieth and the board review is May ninth.
Yep.
So. Here's the thing. We have a board review on May ninth.
Yep.
Whoever takes this, whoever gets this appointment on ours, they have to, you have to take that certification class.
One person and she just took it.
I'll be taking it.
You take it?
Yeah, and the clerk is part of the board review, they actually sit on it and our voting now.
Okay, cause I didn't just know that I had to take that certification.
And now you have to do it every year, it'll be two years.
Yeah, I, yeah, cause I didn't, yeah, before.
Oh, is mine, is mine not good then?
Your, uh, yours should still be good, right?
You just have to have one person, not, everyone doesn't have to, just one person.
I agree, but you should have at least two.
In case you fall over.
Or can't come in or.
Hit my bus or.
Let's not say that kind of shit, Mitch, unless it's talking about you.
Yeah.
Or missing you.
So did you say James is?
I think we should have another.
Is James good for another year?
No, I, I don't.
Check that and have you do it.
Oh.
Or whoever's on the, just know that this next one, we need one more person to take it, okay?
Is that like an online, like an hour thing or?
You can do it online?
Yeah, it's like a.
Yeah.
Something, yeah.
All right. Okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Any announcements, or that was the announcements, uh, did I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Jeez, nice.
Oh, second.
All in favor, aye, aye.
You're enough. Longest time.
That was a good meeting.